In the room, a little housekeeping. The emergency exit is in the rear corner of the room, and the assembly point is the far side of the car park. Toilets are at the end of the corridor on the right, and there is an accessible toilet to the right of the lift over there if you need it. Please do help yourselves to a cup of tea outside the room. Tonight, Peter Wheelhouse, Laura, Sarah, Becca and Rachel will manage the minutes, questions board, participant settings and the IT generally. The meeting will be recorded and made available on our YouTube channel. For those councillors attending via Zoom, please use a yellow hand. And for everyone else, please ask questions through the Q and A board. Before the meeting starts, also the first on the agenda is declarations of interests and apologies for absence. So Peter.
We have apologies from Anne Hills, which we'll need to vote on.
Can I get a proposer to accept the apologies of absence? Tracy, seconded by Anita, all those in favour.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. And then declarations of interests.
Yes, I've received declarations of interest from all councillors that are present this evening. By virtue of the fact that they have an interest as representatives of the landowner of Badgers Hill, all have signed dispensation forms that enable them to take part in the proceedings tonight and to ultimately vote. But again, we need to vote to accept those dispensations.
Great. Can I have a proposer for that? Mark Doyington, a seconder, Steve Tanner, all those in favour.
That's unanimous.
Brilliant. In addition, councillors Anne Hills and Philip Campania, although the CBS is no longer involved and they're no longer directors, they have volunteered to withdraw from tonight as well. So first on the, so next on the agenda is questions and comments from the public and councillors. To be clear, this is only related to items not on the agenda, so nothing to do with Badgers Hill. Are there any questions or anything else? Probably quite a good thing if there aren't. Rachel. Oh, they're watching online. Great. But if they're online, they can't vote. Yeah, brilliant. Thank you. Okay, in that case, we will move on. Can we get the deck up on the screen? If that's okay. So the reason that we are all here tonight is item number three on the agenda, to decide whether to revoke the decision to exclusively enable Badgers Hill Limited to take on a full repairing lease of Badgers Hill Stadium with an option to buy. We go on to the next slide. I'm just going to sort of run through the programme for tonight. So I'm going to introduce in just a second. Then Peter Wheelhouse, acting town clerk, and Jane, acting deputy town clerk, will update us on the background and the current situation. We then have representations by Badgers Hill Limited. There'll then be space for questions and comments from councillors, then from the public, and then we will vote on the recommendations at the end of that. So I am going to introduce this. Hold on a second. So I think, I just want to start by saying that we didn't want to be here today and we don't want to be in this position. When we made the decision back in July, we genuinely hoped that it would be the long-term sustainable solution and the fresh start to the stadium that we all really wanted it to be. But five months on, it's clear that neither of these things have been achieved. The bottom line is that the situation is untenable. It's not working for us, it's not working for Badgers Hill Limited, and it's not working for the community either. And it can't continue, so we need to find a solution. The focus tonight is on the future, but I just wanted to start by outlining how we have got here. So our very first council meeting as a new administration, we made the decision to pay off the debts of Frimtown Holdings, which was around 340k. The ground was literally about to be repossessed. We were told that if we didn't agree to that, then the bailiffs would be there the next morning to padlock the site. In exchange, we secured an option to buy the freehold, which we exercised in 2023, and we worked with the community to set up the Community Benefit Society. The idea was a separate organisation would manage the stadium in partnership with the football clubs. The stadium had been underfunded for years and was in a poor state when the CBS took it on. And we worked with the CBS and Frimtown Football Club to secure significant grant funding for repair and improvement, around £350,000 to the CBS and £150k to the club was spent on the site. The repair and improvement project isn't finished, however, regardless of this, and there is work still needed to complete the boiler and the changing rooms. There has been a lot said about the shortfall and what has happened with this. Our understanding is that the majority of the shortfall is due to inflation and unforeseen groundwork very early on. But we've commissioned an internal audit to confirm this, and we will publish a conclusion of it when it is concluded. But regardless of, you know, whatever has happened, the money is gone and the project is unfinished, so we are where we are. Earlier this year, we were approached by an individual, Courtney Fong, working with Frimtown Football Club, who proposed a lease with an option to buy Badgers Hill. We entered into negotiations with him, including, which involved paying significant legal fees. As this had strong support from the football community, so although, you know, we were hesitant at times, it felt very clear that this is what the football community wanted, and we listened to that. Courtney proposed setting up Badgers Hill Limited to manage the site alongside the football club. We carried out our due diligence over the course of the spring and into the early summer, and in early July, agreed to enter into a full repairing and maintenance lease, as agreed at that last meeting. This was for £32,000 a year and very favourable terms, including no deposit. And it included the ability for Badgers Hill Limited to purchase the grounds at any time, and this was to encourage investment. So, you know, they would know that if, you know, if they did invest in the site, then it would be, you know, they could buy it. We were very clear from the start, it was sold as seen, and due diligence on the site was, you know, as the state of the site was their responsibility. Because this was very close to the start of the football season, we agreed to enter into a temporary tenancy at will so that the football season could begin. It was always meant to be temporary, and either party can end this at any time. This was signed by Badgers Hill Limited at the agreed rent and with certain conditions that Peter will outline. Over the summer, I think we, you know, we focused on other projects. But in early September, we were very keen to sort of start the legal process and move forward. But since then, we've repeatedly asked for agreement from Courtney Fong to instruct our solicitor, as we don't want to incur any more legal fees unless Badgers Hill Limited is ready, but have not had that confirmation back. Part of this is because Courtney identified a typo in the valuation. We immediately had the valuer recheck it, and they confirmed in writing that the valuation still stood. There has been no further negotiation or, you know, explanation of what's holding things up. Later in September, Badgers Hill Limited asked us to fund the boiler repairs and to waiver the rent. While hesitant, we were prepared to consider both, and we started by getting quotes to finish up the boiler. We said that in order to make a decision, we asked for a business case explaining how the rent waiver would support the longer term project, transparency over finances, as waiving the rent could be seen as a grant to men's football, and we've got to be careful about that. And for the boiler, we asked for commitment to entering into the full lease and a clear plan for the wider investment the site clearly needed, as, you know, it needs more than Frimtown Council, you know, could ever have invested. We didn't receive any of this, to be clear, despite repeated asks. At the same time as all of this was happening, concerns over health and safety were increasing, and Peter and Jane will explain these. And since early September, we have sent multiple emails requesting action. They've been increasingly serious, but we do not feel that they've been taken seriously. And as a result, I think our trust and confidence are wavering. The site is deteriorating and it urgently needs investment. Frimtown Council has already invested a great deal. The current total is around £430,000 of the town's money plus staff time. We have other commitments and we have responsibility to all of Frim, not just to the football club. You know, it is not, we understand that Badgers Hill Limited is not necessarily willing to invest upfront, and that is absolutely their decision, but the site needs investment, which means that we have to look at other options. The recommendation tonight does not mean that Badgers Hill Limited is out. It's about opening this conversation up and hopefully coming together as a community to find a sustainable way forward. I think that everyone in this room all wants the same thing. We all want Badgers Hill to be the home of football for everyone in Frim for decades to come and a thriving local community asset. We just have to find a way to achieve that together. So over to Peter.
Could I have the next slide, please, Laura? So as you'll have seen from the report, we set out the key tenant obligations within the tenancy at will. And as this slide shows, they are to pay the rent, secure our approval in writing for any alterations, keep the property in good repair and condition, and comply with any reasonable regulations that may be made by Frimtown Council's landlord. And as you'll have heard, and as is detailed in the report, no rent has been paid. There was work done without our approval. And with regards to other health and safety aspects, Jane will pick those up in a moment. I also want to draw attention to the fact that, aside from the tenancy at will, Badgers Hill Limited have a legal duty of care. And that's set out in the Occupiers' Liability Acts of 1954 and 1984, and Jane will talk to this duty shortly. Over to Jane.
Thank you. Yes, so the advice from our solicitor is that the Owners' Liability Act defines the legal duty of care that a person who occupies or controls a property is responsible for, requiring them to take reasonable steps to ensure that visitors, staff and volunteers are reasonably safe. The Health and Safety Executive is very clear about those steps. You need to carry out risk assessments to identify the risks. There's clear guidance available on what risk assessments are required. And Alastair Finley, our facilities manager here at the Frimtown Council, has also provided suitable advice to Badgers Hill Limited around the procedures that need to be followed. I've heard people say, it's not been a problem before, it's not that bad, and you're just making a fuss about health and safety. It's not being taken seriously, and just because nothing bad has happened before doesn't mean it won't happen. I accept that if you're using the clubhouse, you're not sitting there thinking, hmm, I wonder if it's safe. You just assume it is because it all looks okay and you trust those that are in charge. We wanted to demonstrate that we're not just making a fuss or being difficult. So we commissioned and paid for a health and safety risk assessment, a fire risk assessment, a Legionella risk assessment, an electrical installation certificate, and an asbestos report had previously been carried out. If we could move to the next slide, please, Laura? So as shown on the slides, there is a high risk of Legionella, which is the outcome of the assessment that was done. The fire risk assessment identified 22 items requiring immediate risk reduction, and 17 of those are still outstanding. The electrical condition report is rated unsatisfactory, with one item being marked as dangerous and six items as potentially dangerous. Slides move, that's good. And all of those are highlighted as requiring action as a matter of urgency. There are further 13, nine issues where improvement is recommended. On the health and safety risk assessment, 24 risks require prompt attention, and there is no asbestos management plan in place. In addition to this, I think that's the next slide as well, sorry Laura. In addition to this, unauthorised works were carried out in the clubhouse, resulting in the need for an updated fire safety strategy, including revised signage, safety lighting, an electrical safety certificate and building regulation certificate. Whilst Frimtown Council is not responsible for dealing with the risks, as landlords, we cannot be aware of them and sit back and do nothing, as effectively we would be allowing the danger to continue, which is not acceptable. And I just want to remind everybody of why health and safety is so serious. It prevents injuries, illness and deaths, protecting people and ensuring legal compliance. The consequences of neglecting it can be severe financial penalties, which are unlimited fines, legal prosecution, even imprisonment, devastating reputational damage, loss of business, and most importantly, the tragic loss of life and life-altering injuries. So it's equally important that if something should happen, adequate insurance cover is in place.
Laura, could I have the next slide, please? Thank you. And this is really just a title, but I'll explain where we are in terms of the current state of negotiations. The report details the correspondence that has gone back and forth between Frimtown Council and Badgers Hill Limited in recent months. Just provide some highlights. Badgers Hill Limited have repeatedly refused to pay rent, first claiming that they could not afford to do so, and without evidence of their financial position, as we requested on many occasions. And then claimed that due to the lack of heating, the council was effectively constraining their trading activities and should not charge rent until it was operational. Now, at the end of October, we indicated that we were prepared to consider a request from BHL that FTC should contribute to the cost of heating. But that was subject to us having the confidence that there was a commitment from BHL to entering into a full repairing lease and investing in the stadium. Unfortunately, there was no such commitment despite chasing. You've already heard from Jane that there's been no satisfactory response to the concerns around a lack of action to address health and safety. And as you can imagine, that has dented our trust and confidence in BHL as a manager of the stadium. There have been some developments since we published our report, and the publication of our report led to a request from representatives of BHL to meet us. And on Monday, we met with Martin Starnes and David Parry of Frimtown Football Club and BHL. And subsequent to that, we have received notification that action has been taken by BHL to address health and safety. We've yet to receive the detail on that, but hopefully that will be forthcoming this evening. Further, they have asked for a deferral of the decision to remove BHL's exclusivity, pending the submission of a business plan that they aim to submit in January. I have to say, before this meeting, I stood by the recommendations that were in the report and still do, because they don't bar BHL from submitting their plan and FTC considering it alongside others. So whatever the outcome of this meeting, there is still an opportunity for BHL to come forward. So that's all I was going to say regarding the current state of negotiations. Over to you Fiona.
Brilliant. So Martin and David, I think you can stand at the lectern if you'd like, if you wanted to say something in response before we go to questions.
Thanks, Aron. Hello. Thank you Fiona, thank you everybody. Thank you for inviting us here to say our piece. I'm Martin Starnes, only just recently joined Frimtown Football Club. I've been in professional football for the last 18 years, and I've spent most of my life in football, one way or the other, as a player, a scout, an analyst, an administrator. And I've circulated my CV to a number of you. I've been chief executive at Swindon Town, Yeovil Town, Plymouth Argyle and Bristol Rovers. So the point I want to make really is that I take health and safety very, very seriously indeed. I'm used to having to get safety certificates to open stadiums. They're not required at this level, I think they should be. I think any stadium that's capable of holding 2,000, 3,000 people should have a safety certificate. It's not a legal requirement, but it should be. But that doesn't matter, because we need to have the stadium at a level which would gain us a safety certificate in any other circumstances. So it wasn't until Monday really that I became aware, having met with Fiona, Peter and Jane, just how frustrated the council are with the lack of progress. I don't want to make excuses for Courtney, but he has had some serious issues with his daughter. And we've also found out that his father is suffering from a very serious illness. So I'm sure that is distracting him. I've offered to go over to Chicago and speak with him and try and reinforce his commitment to the football club. And David has spoken to him today, and I think that's still a possibility. And I think that he will delegate authority to myself and David to take that on board. I'm going to say this now, I think I'm okay saying it, David, that Courtney has asked me to take on the role of CEO for Frimtown Football Club and Badgers Hill. I haven't yet agreed to do that because he's just thrown that at me today. But what I want to also say is that we are absolutely committed to fixing the problems at Badgers Hill and the stadium. And we think that if we get all this done, we can attract the investment in. I've cleared it with Courtney that we could issue preference shares or bonds to supporters, to the community, to sponsors, to advertisers, to help us fund the work that needs to be done. Once we've got the building running suitably and safely, we think that we can have a plan that's going to mean the club trades sustainably. I've always worked at clubs where the stadium and the football club have been one entity. So I've got a lot of experience in running football. I've also got a lot of experience running stadiums. I ran Bryan Adams and an Elton John concert at Swindon Town and a Rod Stewart concert at Plymouth Argyle, and lots of other minor events aside from that. So I know what it takes to run a stadium and a football club. And with two of those clubs, my owners weren't prepared to put any money in. We had to run it on a self-sustaining basis, and we did it because we had to. The last club I was with, Bristol Rovers, the owner wanted to be very ambitious and put some money in. That was his choice. I believe football clubs, particularly at this level, need to be sustainable. And I think the facility at Badgers Hill is fantastic for the club and for the community. And we've got to maximise its potential, and I think we can do that. I'm confident that we can do that. So what I'm asking for tonight, given that I'm new on the scene, is really to maintain the exclusivity to the end of January and to try and rebuild the trust that I know has been lost with the council. And I think that's understandable and very unfortunate. But if we can be given to the end of January with the exclusivity, I'm sure that we can convince you all that we're the ones to take on Badgers Hill and the football club.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Martin. David, do you want to say something? I'll keep an eye on the time. Speak into the microphone.
No, 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 it's just the usual Mickey taking that goes on when I try talking. Apologies for the slightly mad throat. I must be honest, at the meeting on Monday, I was quite stunned that so many things weren't quite right, or worse than that. What we can tell you is that we've already had a team of electricians in today and will start work on the emergency lighting tomorrow. But our main concern was the state of the hospitality room, which was the gym. In the tests, we actually found live wires, so we thought that was more important than emergency lighting, because any people shouldn't be walking past that. So that's been sorted out. I know there's a query about the liability insurance, that's now with the brokers to sort out. And we are committed to health and safety. I think Martin hasn't mentioned that, but one of his colleagues, he worked with at Bristol Rovers a month. He's offered to come and give us consultation work. He's safety officer at Bristol Rovers, he still is, and come in for two or three days a month to give us guidance. Because what is forgotten, we're all basically volunteers. So we need advice from people who know what they're doing. We do our very best. Common sense has got to be used, but I appreciate the frustration the council's had in trying to get answers from Courtney. But from the conversation I had with him today, he is, without over egging it, he's in not a good state with the state of losing your 15-year-old daughter in hospital. And just found out his father's having treatment for cancer. So you have to understand that, but what we've asking for is delegated authority to deal with that. And as I say, Martin asked me to go over, but as it's minus 20 out in Chicago, I don't think I'd bother at the moment. We are taking things seriously. The asbestos plan I started work on, there's one area we think there's a problem with. Basically, asbestos plan is telling contractors, don't go in near, anywhere near it. If it's in the floor, don't touch it. And that's all you have to do, but it's an eight-page form. I've started work on that myself this week. I will like to, the fact of the matter is, I think we all appreciate, and I think Fiona made the point on Monday, that we had to rush at things with the start of the season being the 9th of August, and things weren't signed to the 16th of July. So it's very difficult to get everything going and catch up. Cosmetically, the ground looks fantastic, but underneath, we know it's not right. So we know we've got to address that, and with Martin's innovative ideas in getting money in, we might well be able to do that. So we're just asking for a bit more time and patience. We're doing our very best in challenging circumstances. And what gets forgotten is we've got to provide a facility for the community. We're starting to build that up again, having lost everything in last year. The bingo starts in January. We had a nativity play thing last Friday. Of course, the For Dad's Sake charity started off at our ground and raised nearly £3,000 for Mind Somerset a couple of weeks ago. So all those things are important, we mustn't forget that. Frimtown Women playing regularly on our ground and the relationship with them has improved dramatically. Phone calls now, emails, WhatsApp messages.
I'm not sure that they would say that. Let's just see for that. I'm not going to speak for them, but I just want to.
Well, I'll take exception to that because I had a friendly conversation with Tim Vine, the chair, on Sunday. So if you want to believe something else, that's entirely your prerogative, but that's not the case as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, David. We'll go to questions for councillors in a sec, but I just want to sort of first of all say that obviously none of this is personal with Courtney, and we do obviously understand family situation. I just want to say that we send our best wishes as a council to him and hope that, yeah, that things improve for him. So, yeah, we're going to go to questions from councillors first. Anita.
A question for you, Martin, if I may. Okay, as long as you've got the mic, that's fine.
Hello, I'm alive.
It was very good to hear you, David, talk about community, because clearly, much as football is super important to us, as well as the town, you know, this is a community asset as far as we're concerned. And that's one of the things that's really important for us to see take off, to cater not only for footballing fans, but for other people who'd like to use the venue for other reasons. My question to you is, considering the health and safety condition of the clubhouse, I know it's important to get people in, but would you be prepared to close it if necessary in order to get that work done if it's deemed a danger?
I don't think that it's in a state at the moment which would require closure. Yes, there are some limited risks which we are addressing very, very quickly now. But I think that for the purposes that the club is being used at the moment, it's fine. But as we widen the community aspect of it, then we've got to make sure that the building is as safe as it could possibly be. If I could just add, if you don't mind, I'm very community focused. And I'm still chairman of Yeovil Town Community Sports Trust. I was on the community trust board at Bristol Rovers. I was on the community trust board at Plymouth Argyle. And it's very important to me. I always regard the clubs I'm with as being family and community orientated.
Thank you. Andy Jones, question.
Just actually sort of related to that closure question. One of the recommendations tonight is that we delegate to the town clerk the ability to close the clubhouse if it's assessed as needed. If we were forced down that path, and obviously that's not where we want to be, but if we are forced down that path, do we have any sense of what the cost to FTC would be of closing and maintaining a closed site?
Yes, Jane.
Thanks, Andy. So I can only give you the... Can you hear me now? Okay. So I can only give you the basics at the moment. We had hoped to be able to give you properly, proper costs. So in terms of the basics, by that I mean any fencing that might be required, CCTV, intruder alarms, new... alarms, new locks, that sort of thing. So we're estimating that at £10,000 for six months. What we're waiting for quotes to come back for, which will be guided by our insurers, is whether or not we actually need proper certified security staff or whether a caretaker would be acceptable for the insurance to cover the site. So yes, I can't see the full costs at this point in time, unfortunately.
Just for clarification, when you talk about 10K for six months, is that 10K over six months, or is it 10K per month for six months?
In total.
Okay, thank you.
Polly.
Thank you for standing up and explaining your position. I was really hoping for a lot of clarification and response to the report that's been published online, which I thought gave you quite a lot of notice about unpaid rent, et cetera. So I was really hoping that you might address that in your delivery there, and I think it would be really good to hear that. Just kind of also wondering why it's taken an extraordinary meeting to start forms and find live wires and things like that. I just was hoping for a bit of clarification on this timing for you. It seems to me that you're responding to this situation, this situation for us is only out of, you know, real desperation after having lots and lots of communication prior to this. So sort of the impression that I'm getting, not having been directly involved in these meetings, is that you're asking for an extension as a result of today, but this today part didn't come as a surprise. I just wondered if you could clarify.
I'll try. Obviously, as I've said before, I'm fairly new to the party, so I can't really comment too much on what happened between July and, let's say, October time. I wasn't aware that the council was really getting frustrated about the lack of a business plan. We can address that. As far as the rent's concerned, I think the issue for Courtney has been that he's inherited, or the Badgers Hill has inherited, a lot of problems with the site, which are going to cost a lot of money to eradicate. And why would anybody take on a tenancy at will, which can be withdrawn at any time, and pay tens of thousands of pounds on repairs and still pay a rent? And I think that the council could have looked at the state of the building and made some proposals to Courtney about what was going to happen in terms of repairs and safety issues before that tenancy at will was signed. Now, I know it's been said that the tenancy was done as seen, I get that, but the condition report didn't come out until two weeks afterwards. Now, I've spoken to Fiona about it, and she said, well, we should have done our own due diligence. But Courtney's in America, and yes, he could have perhaps delegated somebody to look at it in a bit more detail. But as seen, in a property of this nature, is loaded with potential difficulties, as we've found out. And I think that's the issue for the non-payment of rent. It's paying out additional costs on top of what needs to be done. Now, what we're prepared to do is get the health and safety stuff done, because it's absolutely vital. But we will want a conversation about the waiving of the rent, and Fiona said that that is a possible conversation that we can have. I wasn't aware of that until Monday. So I think there's very good grounds for us to get around a table and negotiate a way out of this, because it's frankly a mess. And it's a mess not of Courtney Fong's making, it's one that's been brought forward, we're trying to deal with it. And we will deal with it if we're given the opportunity to do so.
So before I go to Lisa, I just want to clarify a couple of things there, that it's, you know, I think there is a case, but it was never made, if, you know, and the tenancy at will was signed and agreed, and that case wasn't made at that time. I do think there is a case, given the amount of investment the site needs, for, you know, for something to happen. But to say that it should have been up to us to make that proposal is, I think, the wrong way of looking at it. It should have been down to Courtney and to Badgers Hill Limited to make that case. And I just want to sort of clarify, and I'm going to go to Lisa now, but I just want to clarify that, because you know, you said what I said. Lisa, your question.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to try to cut through a few things. And I really want to acknowledge and appreciate and esteem all of the hard work that has been put in by everybody at Badgers Hill, the football club, everybody in and around football, who I wholeheartedly believe have always tried their best. And I want to hold that. Likewise, there has been a lot of hard work and sacrifice, not just by people sat at this table, but people behind the scenes within council. And thirdly, bring in that there are 40,000 residents?
28.
Sorry, 28. Getting ahead of myself. 28,000 residents who are also part of this story. And those residents also need something from this, because it's public funding. And I just want to hold, before we move, that everybody has always tried their best and everybody has put in so much work. And if we totaled up the hours, I am deeply saddened by the fact that there are so many passionate, incredible, talented, there's so much expertise, that between these two organisations, we've not been able to make this a success. And that is deeply disappointing. So collectively, I'd just like to hold that whatever happens tonight is not about not caring. It is not about a failure on any side of this. It's nobody's failure. And what I'd really like to feel and believe is that whatever decision we make here, we will be able to work together regardless, and that we all want the same outcome. And though it may not be a decision that everybody is entirely happy with, it doesn't mean that we're not all trying to achieve the same outcome. So I suppose I'd like to stop fighting for who's right and who's wrong. I'd really like to hold that we are all trying to do the same thing and hope that we can continue the conversation with that as an objective.
Can I go, any other councillors got any questions specifically about the...
Mark. Mrs Stans, can I ask, how are the bills being paid at the moment? There's obviously money being used to keep the club going, paying for electricians, all that stuff that you've said is going to happen, which we're glad to hear, but where's the money coming from, from that at the moment?
Well, we generate money through the gates, obviously, from matches, but we are very dependent upon the timing of our football matches. We have a game this evening, which we hope will generate some money through the gates and through the bar. So we're using that income to pay our bills as they arise.
Self-sustaining at the moment?
Well, I think that's probably a bit of a stretch to say it's self-sustaining, because, you know, we need to open up the facility for more events and more revenue. But, you know, we're coping, we're coping.
Tracy.
I'm really interested to hear what you had to say, and I suppose because I'm afflicted by a terrible thing that's called hope over experience. So as you were talking about it, I thought, yeah, that would be great, that would be good, that would be, you know, there is a future, there is a possibility. What really concerns me, I think, because I, from the beginning, this was the first thing most of us were involved in, certainly for me as a councillor, wanted this to work. Quite closely connected, quite a lot of people who wanted to be part of it and involved themselves within it. I wanted it to work for the CBS. I understood, as I think some of the people at the other, one of the very important meetings we had last summer, that whilst it was quite an unusual situation, I hope that, you know, Courtney Fong and all those were going to bring us a bright new future. So that's where I come from for it and for the community. What concerns me is, without asking you to name names or point fingers, and it may not be as simple as that, is that here we are again in a situation where things haven't worked again, where, I mean, I question how I would be, I'm not particularly keen to work with people who think it's okay to break a contract by not telling the landlord that you want to do some work or you've done some work, not only not before, but not during and not after, and then not producing a certificate about it. So however bright a picture you may bring, and I hope you would bring us a proposal that is full and fleshed out and explains your thinking in more detail, and that would be interesting to see along with anything else that anybody else wants to bring forward from outside of this room or within this room. I am concerned, not to put too fine a point on it, as to who are we dealing with apart from you? You can't answer that as a question, because it would be defamatory, but that worries me.
So I completely agree with you on the sort of work being carried out unauthorized and uncertificated. I'm a chartered certified accountant, so with that comes responsibilities for adhering to regulations and making sure the right things are done and correctly recorded. So I'm completely with you on that. Courtney, I think, is not, as David said, not in a good place at the moment. So he's not wavering in his commitment, he's wavering in his time that he can give to us. And so we are really on the cusp of getting him to delegate authority to carry on negotiations, which I hope we will be allowed to do, for the full lease with the option to buy. So that's where we are. Now, I wouldn't be involved, I mean, I'm a volunteer, I wouldn't be involved unless I thought we could achieve something from this. I believe in football clubs. My mantra to people that are in football clubs is the club comes first, second and last. And we can't get involved with personal agendas, I have no personal agenda, I have no financial interest in the club, I just want the club to survive and thrive. That's basically where I am.
Anita, and then Lisa.
Thank you for that. One question, you say you are a volunteer, which is fine. I'm just wondering, you know, you're talking about having the delegation put down to you so that you would be able to take a stronger control as CEO, but how much time will you be able to give this? Because I think it's probably going to require an awful lot. And will that mean that you will end up delegating to others to do the work in order to maximise your time?
It's an excellent question, if I may say so. The role of a CEO is to delegate. So in a club of this size, obviously, there has to be hands-on. I've been hands-on in every club I've been associated with, going even down to taking covers off the pitch when there's been a frost. So I'm not frightened to get my hands dirty. But at the end of the day, you have to get people around you that you can get to do certain tasks. As David alluded to earlier, I have a very good friend of mine who I worked with at Yeovil Town for six years as a health and safety advisor, stadium manager. He's got terrific background in stadium management. He has already indicated to me that he will give me his support as needed. In terms of the number of days that it needs or I can give, to be frank, I've got to look at it and make my own assessment of that situation, if you don't mind me carrying that one over for the moment.
Lisa.
It's in a number of parts, so bear with me.
I'm going to test my memory, are you?
Not going to test your memory, but I think you're going to want to respond when I say this, and I'm just going to ask to pause for a minute. What if you can't do it? So I'm not asking for a response just now. What if you just can't do it? Not because you don't care enough, not because you don't have the expertise, not because you don't have the right team. But honestly, what if you can't do it? I think as a council, we've come to that conclusion ourselves. We, as much as we want to be able to do it, we can't do it. We just can't achieve it. And there's no shame in that. And I'm curious about why allowing somebody else to help you do that appears to seem threatening. So I suppose the ultimate question is, what is it that you're trying to achieve? And if somebody else could help that be achieved, is that a problem?
Absolutely not a problem. It's the way businesses work. I mean, I've not only worked in football clubs, I've worked in IT industry, in senior levels, and I've always had a team of different expertise that reported into me. The role of a leader, as I'm sure Fiona knows as a leader of the council, you can't be all things to all men and women. You've got to have other expertise feeding into you, and you have to take the responsibility at the end of the day of making the right decisions based on the advice that you get. It's not that I don't know about these things, I do, but sometimes you need to have that attention to detail that someone who's immersed in these things all the time can give you, and you can make rational decisions about it. So it's absolutely normal to have people that you delegate certain tasks to.
And with the greatest respect, Martin, you may not be that person. And somebody else may not be that person. And I'm just wondering what the problem is about all of us agreeing to open up an opportunity to see who can do it. I don't know what's trying to take anything away from you, I just don't understand what we're, like, going back and forth on, I don't understand what we're trying to achieve. I think it's in everybody's interest to provide an opportunity for somebody to show up to do it really, really well. And I, God, I hope that that's you. But I'm not willing to risk the whole thing on one horse.
Okay, so if I can respond to that. Having been in football a long time, I know that football, the football business is a high-risk business. It doesn't matter what level you're at, whether it's Premier League or Southern League, it's a high-risk business. And at the end of the day, you've got to put your trust in someone. And my CV, I think, will stand up to anybody's in terms of what I've achieved in football. And I'm asking you to trust me. It's obviously your prerogative not to do so, but I would defy anybody coming in with a stronger CV than mine of achievement in football.
Okay, a few more questions. So Polly first, then Andy, Anita, Steve, and then I will open up to, if we keep it quick, and then I'll open up to the floor. But Polly first.
Okay. I just feel, I suppose, a little bit frustrated that we have come together tonight and the response to all of the report that was published to pull this extraordinary meeting is, I'm new and can we have an extension? I think more of a plan would have been prudent for this evening, or to just have that sort of, that request for an extension come sooner without having to pull this all together. So we're being asked tonight whether or not to keep your exclusivity, but we've got nothing to go on. I'm just not hearing, you know, a really solid plan in response to that. I'm hearing, like, you know, I've just got here, here's my CV and it's great, and you could just trust me, and that's fine. But it takes more than that if we've all, you know, I think the public have seen, you know, the report so far, and I just don't think I'm hearing enough answers, sorry.
But I completely understand.
We go to councillors, because otherwise it's going to drag on a bit. So Steve, I don't think there was a question in there, so.
Yeah, Marta, thanks for your answer so far. I just want to go back to this whole rent thing, because, you know, when we met here in July and the £32,000 rent was agreed, you know, there was, everyone went off and that was happy. And then for the next two or three months, you know, Courtney decided that he wanted to question that, you know, based on this misprint in evaluation. Well, it's an arbitrary figure, isn't it, for a football club? You can't go to a local estate agent and come up with a number for rent, you know, you know that, you mean in football. You know, you know that, you've been in football. And so now we're asking for a deferment on the rent, if that's something that we've prepared. Does that mean to say that Courtney or whoever is in charge now has agreed the £32,000 rent?
I haven't had a response from Courtney on the number yet. But, you know, that's part of the, I think Martin said early on, if we've had some quotations for a word that needs doing fire doors is the next thing on the plan for January. And we've really got to see those cusp before we can make a comment on that. And that's part of the business plan we want to submit to you. And bearing in mind the exclusivity, information about exclusivity, we were only told last week. And if we want to come up with a business plan, it is believable, I think, as Martin mentioned on Monday, a week isn't enough time to do that. Let's be quite honest about that.
That's fine, but this goes back to July, doesn't it?
Yeah, but business plan wasn't part of, wasn't...
The rent was.
The rent was, yeah, because that was Courtney. And by the way, the rent was due in, what was it, July? So that'll be...
No, it was due, first one was October.
October, yeah. That's what I mean. So it's October. So it's one rental payment and then we're unpaid yet. Another one during January. Yeah.
All right.
Just clarify that, Steve, as well, because I think, my understanding, and Peter can come in on this, is that the £32,000 was actually an offer from Courtney, very close to the decision, I think. It did come, he said that he would, you know, I will pay it if you can't justify the best consideration. But since that meeting, I don't think we have had any confirmation that I can think of in writing from Courtney to agree to it. So I think that is where it is stuck. But also, there haven't been any further negotiations. There hasn't been a sort of, you know, I can't do that, but I could do this, or because of the investment, I could do this. There hasn't been any of that either. So the other side, Andy.
Yeah, I think the focus of this meeting is about the exclusivity agreement. I have to say, I'm hugely heartened by what I've heard this evening from both of you about plans for the future. But, you know, what's happened to the last five months that's already been burnt off. As I see it, us removing the exclusivity is opening up a conversation with other potential people to run the facility. But you guys are on the ground, you're already yards ahead of any competition in being ready to come back to us with a firm proposal, with money behind it, and with a business plan behind it. And that's what we would expect of any other potential tenant of the site. So all we're saying is, we want to move ahead and open up those conversations. But actually, you guys are already well in the running to take this and make a case for it.
Can I come in there, Fiona, please?
I think there was a question, and I just, I want to open up to the floor, and I'm aware of time. So can I just go Anita, and then I'll go to the floor?
I'm going to ask a slightly thorny one here. But I recognize that as CEO, you would be delegating. I think one of the things that's always concerned us in the past is that when we were initially called in to salvage this position, the situation, and save the club from closure, it was as a result of mismanagement from the board. The worry is that if any of the work is given to people who were on that board, that would be, I think, quite a worry for all of us. So...
Can I just say I'll come to the floor, and I'll come to you when we open up to the floor, but we need to do it in order.
Sorry. It's said with the greatest respect, but it was a concern of ours in the early days. And I just really wanted confirmation that there would be due diligence on the people that were delegated to. That would be my request.
Martin, would you like to come back on that?
Yeah, I mean, there is virtually a new board in place, and we would be very sensitive to using contractors where necessary, that were acceptable to the council as well as ourselves. So my plan would be to consult on that. If I can just come back to the other comment that was made regarding exclusivity. We want to press ahead and get all the safety issues done, which is going to cost money. Is it reasonable to be going ahead and spending that money if we don't have exclusivity?
There's no commitment at the moment, so you're on a tenancy of will which either party can end at any time. And I just want to clarify that. Okay, I'm going to go to the floor. Would you like to say something? But can we get a microphone to the man at the back? And then I'll go to Rachel for comments online.
Well, I wasn't going to be confrontational, but Geoff Morton Norris, I'd just like to mention the fact there's been a comment made about contracts given to people connected with the club. This is, in fact, the chairman at that time, which was Andrew Carpenter, obtained, gave certain individuals the go-ahead to do urgent work. And I must say, the following managing board members, including the chairman, then, who took over from Andrew, then went back on the word and refused to pay those contractors. And there's been a court case this week where they brought on by one of the former board members against the CBS, and the court found in that person's favour, not the CBS. So there was no under...
I don't think that's what Anita was referring to at all. And I just wanted to avoid us getting into sort of accusations, you know, that we can't verify, people aren't in the room to defend. It just feels very, very unfair.
No.
I think what Anita was referring to was the...
I was talking long before the CBS even existed.
Yeah.
What, sorry?
I was talking about a time before the CBS even existed.
She was referring, I think, to, you know, to sort of individuals who we avoided before we took it on. But I think we just need to leave that there and get into it, is going back into the past.
Can I just say, just as a supporter for 40 years, I understand where both sides stand. I'm absolutely sick to the stomach that the football club's name's been dragged through the mire again. I understand the reasons why you've had to call it, and I'm deeply disappointed in what's happening. There are things going on at the club now, certainly on the community side. I believe you've received a copy of a list of suggestions from the working community committee that's organized by Courtney. So there are ways forward.
I haven't received that. I haven't received that. Not yet. But it's okay. But Geoff, finish, and then we'll, yeah.
The other point is that I understand your frustrations, and I'd be frustrated too. I think just granting an extension till January, when we're in the middle of December, I don't think that would cause a problem, as long as they deliver a detailed plan that gives you confidence to say, yes, okay, we'll go ahead with that. Just a matter of a month, I don't think will make a lot of difference. I understand your scepticism, and I quite understand it. But I think, let's let Martin go ahead and provide those things. It is all about bringing in expertise. And anyone who provides a funding or proposal to move the ground forward will have to use experts that they currently don't have the expertise to do that. So it's all about bringing in the best people. And Martin, it seems to me, is able to bring the very best people in to move this forward. And I really hope the clubhouse remains open, because safety's obviously of the utmost. But as long as the points that are on contention at the moment are kept away from public use, I think, please, can you try and keep it open for the sake of everyone? But I just would ask, please, please, just give them a chance. Martin seems to have it all together, and if he's got the authority, which is the main thing, you know, you can't really run a company from America without being, you need someone who's at the ground, seeing how things develop. And with Martin there, I'm sure they will move forward. But just for the sake of a month, please consider giving them an extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Yes. Do you want to speak? And then you afterwards, but... Sirs, it's coming around.
Good evening. My name is John Warman. I'm a football club supporter.
We've been email contact.
I'm sad that we are at this place, and I'm sure the councillors are obviously frustrated. And it is a shame that we have reached this position. However, there do seem to be problems with the history of the club. I don't know when asbestos suddenly popped out at Woodwork. Was that known at the time of the lease being offered? It was also very disappointing that in the report on the 2nd of July by the council, it said that the clubhouse roof had been replaced, and the new heating system for the clubhouse and changing rooms was, I quote, "close to completion." What I'm rather at a loss is that if it was close to completion, I've heard different sums mentioned to actually make it work properly. First of all, it was £47,000. Now I'm hearing something like £70,000. Seems very odd. Now, I think there have been problems on a number of scores. As has been alluded, the previous football people managing it ran into difficulties. The CBS ran into difficulties. There seems to be, very strange where all the money went. But we nevertheless find ourselves at this point. What we need, as has been said, is an action plan. We need people to have the chance to address the concerns that have been raised, and to come back and let you see what the action plan is. The problem is money. Money has got to be at the root of it. And I really hope that although Mr. Fong is clearly in a very bad place at the moment, that his previous commitment will hold good, and that there will be some involvement and investment from him, so that Badgers Hill Limited, with the guidance of Martin, who is new to me, but is clearly very experienced, give him a chance.
Can I, I'm just going to come to Peter about the boiler costs. But I just want to be clear, I don't think, to the best of my knowledge, Courtney Fong has ever promised investment in the stadium. And I just want to be clear on that. I don't think that has ever been promised, as far as I'm aware. But Peter, can you come up back on the boiler costs? Because my understanding is that it's to do with different solutions and different, yeah.
Yeah. The figure of £47K came about much earlier. It was a figure that we had heard from the CBS, who at the time were responsible for managing the build. The £70K is our best estimate, our best estimate, having taken some advice on this, you know, in terms of trying to complete the work. So you could argue that the £47K was a guesstimate at the time, but it was one that was presented to us in good faith by the CBS. Our latest estimate is circa £70K to get that boiler operational. And that's the one that we stand by. Obviously, it's, you know, until such time as a contract is let, it can only remain an estimate. But that's the explanation.
Thank you for that, Peter. It still seems that there is a disconnect between the thing being reported, the heating system being reported is close to completion at the beginning of July, when in fact, there seems, I just don't understand how it can be close to completion, and now it needs £70,000. Sorry to harp on this, but I do feel that everybody's got goodwill, the council has only got a certain amount of money, the football club can only generate a certain amount of money. And at the end of the day, there seem to be some really large challenges that are financially difficult to deal with.
Can I just say that a very significant amount of investment went into the project at the clubhouse, including the changing rooms?
Yes.
At the time that that report came out, it was close to completion. And we had hoped that it would be completed. The problem is, is at the time, we weren't aware that the CBS were running out of cash. And unfortunately, that's the reason why it wasn't completed. But certainly, that report was made in good faith at the time. And if you look at the physical situation there, when that report came out, you'll have seen, you know, that the walls were up, the doors were in, much of the work had been done, you know, in terms of the total cost. But there was still some work to be completed, and that is still the case.
Okay. Can I go? Any more questions? Yes, man in purple jumper. Oh, sorry, and then Rachel, sorry, I forgot.
Thank you. I'll try and make this quick. My name's Jonathan Powell, Fromm resident about 58 years. And I have interest in this, being a director of Freeco, one of the creditors for the football club. I appreciate we're all volunteers here, most of the people up there, and the football club, ourselves at Freeco as well. And it was a word that someone mentioned earlier about transparency. I wonder if there could be transparency on the accounts, the management accounts of the football club, because it's not just the council that is not being paid, it is other businesses and organizations in Fromm that are not being paid. And I would like, if the club are willing to be transparent about their accounts and provide management accounts, there should be monthly management accounts, go into the council, so that everyone can make a fair decision. Because we're all volunteers, we all want the best. But please, let us have some transparency over this.
Thank you. David, do you want to come back on that?
Very quickly on that, yeah. Let's get this absolutely clear. That debt is with the Fromm Town Community Benefit Society, not the football club. The Fromm Town Football Club has been paying Freeco on a regular basis since we took over. Back in, yeah, I appreciate your point, it's got Fromm Town at the top, but it's the CBS who weren't paying. It is not the football club.
Hold on, yeah, just go back to you.
Yeah, but that's...
I need to correct that. We've had one bill paper, there are others in arrears.
Can I...
The CBS is a separate matter.
This one's due on the 10th of December, and it's in my account.
BHL is obliged to pay that bill up since it took the tenancy of will.
I'm not referring to that bill.
So you're not referring...
I'm referring to, I don't want to make this about an individual payment. The main point I want to make is transparency. Who, what local businesses and organizations are owed money now and in December and in January? And I think that ought to be made transparent.
Thank you. And, yeah, just to say that I think a big part of us doing this was also for transparency as well, is to put it all into the public domain. Rachel, question online.
Well, so I have some questions here from somebody called an anonymous attendee. I've invited them to share their name, and they have chosen not to. One of the questions, and it's not clear whether it's to the council or to BHL, but if the clubhouse is closed, how will the council ensure that the alcohol is not sold illegally from other buildings, which the premises licence doesn't cover, as this seems to have happened in the past?
But don't move, can we just answer one at a time? Peter, do you want to come on to that? I mean, it would be illegal, I'm presuming. So if you want to.
I mean, the responsibility around the sale of alcohol must rest with the licence holder. Even if the clubhouse was closed, we would not be a licence holder in terms of the sale of alcohol. So we would look to BHL on the remainder of the stadium to ensure that the obligations under their licence are met entirely.
Okay. Rachel, again.
In the summer meeting, BHL stated that they wanted more community benefit. Since they took over, the remaining Darts and Pools teams and Bingo have also, have all left the clubhouse. The Pool team stated they didn't have confidence in the future of the clubhouse. Can BHL explain why community benefit has worsened since they came in, and also whether their community benefit committee has held any meetings?
Can I, Tom can reply to that as, want to, just, and then I'll come to David on the other one, but as co-chair of the community benefit committee.
Thank you, Fiona, and happy to talk a little bit about the community benefit committee.
So we've been appointed by Courtney to track and drive community usage. And on that committee, there's a mix of supporters of the football, there's members of the supporters' club, there's people that work in facilities, there's general local residents, there's general local business people. So it's not all about football, it's around overall community benefits. We're all keen that the site thrives. We've held a couple of meetings already and we see the site as a bit of a lost opportunity. There's host pool, host darts, host weddings, host events, have it as a bar, have it as a nice facility pre and post-match on other times. Also got the football, you've got the men's team, you've got the women's team, you've got the youth teams playing there. So we see there's a great facility there to be used and we've got some working groups ongoing, to your point earlier, around how we can report on what it's used for and how we can drive usage across different stakeholders within the community. As a committee, we can see both perspectives. So we can see that there's a site there that's lacking, it's just not able to be used as it might be able to be used for the community. And we can see that the council doesn't have the resources to sort that out at the moment and that's quite a difficult thing to unlock. I'm actually very new to the situation. I've been a long time fan, long time Berkeley Road resident, but don't know much about the CBS situation, recognise that a report's going to be done on the accounts of that and what's going to be happened, at least some of it will be made available. But really, it's about moving forward from here and thinking about how the community to come together, the council come together and the club can come together to make sure it's sorted. And it's about moving forward. No, I would say, well done to the council for rescuing the site in 2022. I'm sure that's appreciated and be part of rescuing it from here as well. Clearly, this meeting has triggered some reaction from the club and we've seen that around safety commitments being made and they're working through that list. I think we asked them for a business plan and Martin and David have committed to writing one of those by January. And I think you guys have got the opportunity to give them a chance to write that plan. Your meeting has triggered this. I write business plans for a living, it takes a lot more than a few days to write business plans, actually. So I think they probably do need a bit of time to do that. And they're busy spending on the site, we can see that on safety and so on. And I think it's very difficult for them to spend properly on the site without exclusivity. And if they can have that period of exclusivity extended, they can get the safety sorted and they can pull that plan together. So I'd say the community benefit committee sits here to support the site being used really well. We help to channel the community to help support that as well. Actually, met with Courtney a few times, actually been to meet him in Chicago. I didn't go in, it was minus 20, David. I recommend going in the summer, actually. It's much nicer. And I see him as a man who's really committed to making the club work and being there for the community, hence why he sent up this committee that we're working on together. Met with David, Gary, met various people that run the football club and they're all committed to doing this. So I think we should all get behind them and give an opportunity to come back with a plan and set a time on that.
Thank you. Rachel, any other questions?
Can BHL explain what has been achieved in the last five months?
To Martin or David? David's been there for the last five months.
Well, those of you who have seen the state of the site when we were given the keys round about 17th, 20th of July, would have seen the state of... And what has been achieved since then. With the inside building, I know it wasn't cleared, but the one side, the bar where we had a... The insulation had fallen through the ceiling, that's been refurbished. The ground's been tidied up, we have proper bins around the stadium, all part of doing the things properly, putting our waste out to recycling, et cetera. We are actively, or trying to actively engage with Tom on the community side. Unfortunately, and I think it goes back to earlier thing, one of the reasons why some of the events we haven't been able to hold there before are historically taken on from what happened under the previous administration. Virtually from January onwards, events started dropping away. With the greatest respect, it takes time to get things back going again, like the Darts League is on the pool... The Darts League doesn't start again until the summer, so therefore a new Darts team can't go in there until that season starts. So what we've tried to do and achieve, we've got the... We have, of course, we've got some boxing coming up this week, we've had the nativity there, that's slowly coming back. And of course, we raised money, £700 for a charity a couple of weeks ago, Geoff Twentiman. Again, we are restricted with the heating. We've got some very, very temporary solutions in there at the moment, but it's not a long-term solution. So it just takes time. We have already talked about getting the bingo back again in January and we're talking to Pool and Darts teams as well. And it takes time. Unfortunately, we've got a wake there next week as well, but we don't want the residents of Frome to pass so we can make money, that's not the right way of thinking.
Rachel, could I just say, any other questions, but not from anyone anonymous? I think that's... So any other questions from the floor and then I'm going to come back. And I'm going to come back to councillors for sort of comments before we go to the recommendation or if anyone's got any final thoughts. Lisa?
My question, and it's kind of to you, Geoff, and also to you, Martin, and yeah, and everybody else in the football space. Are you willing to... Sacrifice isn't the right word. Are you willing to gamble the future of Frome football on only one option? That's what you are asking us to do as a council. You are asking us to just base the future of football in Frome on one option. And if that fails, you could lose football in Frome forever. I cannot, in good faith, as somebody who has been deeply involved in the project, allow that choice to happen. As good as you may be, and you may be perfect, Martin, I just will not... For you, Geoff, for all the people in those stands, for all the people who weekly football or regular football, for those people, I am not willing to sacrifice the potential future of football in Frome on only one option. I can't do it. That's my comment.
Can I... I'll go to other councillors, but I just want to sort of add to that. I mean, I think the process here is that, you know, we've said that we will open it up and go out to the community and see who is interested. There's no sort of, you know, sense of it could be BHL, but it's also... And then a report will come back in March's council meeting and we'll sort of have conversations with, you know, and see what comes up. But I think that you've probably heard from tonight that as a council, we are, I think, pretty much at our wits' end here. And if nothing viable comes up and there is not a solution, then the only option left to us is to instruct, you know, to go on the open, open market. And that is a very different thing. So there is a sort of sense of this is the last chance now and if we just sort of just go with one, that's... You know, we're not seeing who else is out there and what other options. And if there is something that could work better, is what we're saying. Because it's not, you know, we can never, we, you know, we can't... Yeah, that's where we're at. We will be in a by-election in January, we can't do that. Just, you know, just to be clear on the timeframe. But also, this takes a lot of time to get to this point. It's taken a lot of work by the council. You know, we can't keep spending this amount of time, all of us have put a lot of time and energy in. I don't personally, but it's up to... Anyway, I'm going to go to other councillors. Tracy?
I think I might be... I'm not sure who I'm asking this to. Is there... So if we want to consider any other options that there might be as well, is there not a way that we can consider this option and those other options?
That's what it is. That's what it is.
Why... So why, I don't quite understand what the time restriction about... When do they have to... Those options have to be in and...
We've said a report for March's council, I mean, I don't think that's sort of, you know, firm, but it's to say, the timings is related. We do not want to be in the same situation as we were this year with having to make, you know, a decision as the football, the next football season is approaching and those time pressures. So that's why we're starting now.
That precludes holding over till January then. That would have to cease now, which potentially means the clubhouse to close could potentially...
Not, the two things are not linked.
Okay.
Yeah, the two things are not linked. The decision over the clubhouse is a separate decision. I just want to keep going to councillors. So Polly?
Yeah, I'm glad you said that about the making the issues distinct. So absolutely none of us wants to see fences go up and clubhouse closed. Absolutely not. Absolutely nobody wants a horrible accident to happen while people are celebrating events in the clubhouse or, you know, perhaps if it's unusable, then obviously that's a venue going to waste. So I think absolutely valid what you're saying about time for a business plan. From my point of view, I was hoping that some of the questions would be answered on timings that would be more detailed this evening to just give us reassurance on progress of absolute safety to just to stop us saying, you know, we've completely lost faith in the health and safety of the people who are attending the club and using it for sorts of reasons, not just football fans. And so we don't want to close it, but we also really want to hear reassurance that, you know, that work is being completed and timelines, not just like, oh, we're still in negotiation and we've got this, you know. I just, I didn't think we heard enough this evening. So that would be my final thought on that. Whether we've got time to come back and do the extension in January, that's, you know, that's down to us all as a council. To me, that's a separate issue to the safety, which is really concerning. And I didn't, I didn't hear enough this evening on reassurances.
Any other councillors? Anita?
Yeah. Martin, I was very... I was filled with confidence after listening to your discussion this evening. I think you're clearly a very capable person in terms of football management. David, it was very good to hear you talking about community. I think there's an awful lot of positivity that's come from both of you this evening. But I feel, in fairness to the town, we probably do have to go with the option of no further exclusivity, but exclusivity, but I don't think that should preclude you from putting your ideas forward, continuing to work with us over the next few weeks and with the possibility and the hope that you would have a good enough plan to see this go forward. I mean, as a resident personally for over 60 years, I and my family have made so much use of this football facility in one way or another over the years. My sons still play football now and so do my two grandsons. So it's a huge thing in our family and I would love to see it continue and flourish. But I think the only decision we, from my perspective this evening, that would be feasible would be to open up some options for us, in fairness to the town, as it is such public money. But I really, in the bottom of my heart, I hope that there is a way that we could go forward because some of your ideas and clearly your experience sound as though they could really help Frometown football go forward.
Thank you. Unless anyone else wants to say anything, I think we go to the recommendations. Laura, can we get them up? So, hold on, hold on, hold on a sec. We haven't made a decision yet, so can we make... We haven't voted... I'll take one question from someone who hasn't spoken, but then we do need to go to the recommendation.
Just on the... On the... Should the... Should the repairing lease be revoked? And it goes... The exclusivity is no longer in favour of Badgers Hill. Who therefore continues to operate the site and in the interim during the non-exclusivity? And how will Frometown council gain any revenue from the site in the interim?
We're not gaining any revenue right now because rent hasn't been paid, but...
No, I appreciate that, but surely in...
If Badgers Hill Limited would like to stay on the tenancy at will, they're welcome to. They're two different things. A full leasehold with the option to buy, it also hasn't been entered into. So it's not that we're revoking something that's happened, it's just that we haven't got, you know, we haven't got any further with it, right? So it's sort of, it's revoking a decision, but it's not revoking anything else and it's just opening it up to, you know, to people. But if Badgers Hill Limited would like to stay on the tenancy at will, they're welcome to. There is obviously a separate issue around the safety of the clubhouse, but that's separate. They're two separate things. I think we do need to go to a decision because otherwise, I'm aware that there's a football match. Martin, final word, but do keep it quick.
Just before you make a final decision, please take into consideration the fact that we all want this ground to be made safe and we're committed to doing so. But is it reasonable for us to spend that money when exclusivity is not available to us? All we're asking for is a six-week extension for a business plan to be so business.
Let's go to... Shall we go to the recommendation? Is everyone happy to go to the recommendation? Yep. Okay, let's get them up on the screen. So the first decision, first recommendation is, I'm going to take them separately, is to revoke the decision taken at council on the 2nd of July to exclusively enable Badgers Hill Limited, BHL, to take on a full repairing lease of Badgers Hill Stadium with an option to buy. So all those in favour, put your hands up. Or who is proposing? So hold on, is everyone clear on that? What that is? Mark's looking confused. Yeah? Is that... Is everyone ready to... All those in favour of revoking the exclus... Proposer? Who is... Lisa is proposing, a seconder? Andy Jones, all those in favour?
Two. Three.
Two, three, four, five, six.
So that's a majority.
Of six, okay.
The others that haven't voted, are they abstaining?
Abstain.
The next recommendation is that delegated authority is granted to the acting town clerk in consultation with councillor Fiona Bowes, leader of the council, and councillor Steve Tanner, lead councillor for assets two, next slide. Terminate BHL's tenancy of the clubhouse and close the clubhouse if deemed necessary. This would be subject to further assessments of the safety and condition of the building. Further legal and other professional advice and discussions with football users regarding the implications of closing the clubhouse. Terminate BHL's tenancy at will on the remaining site when future management arrangements are confirmed. Prepare contingency plan for FTC managing a closed clubhouse with any costs to be met from the general reserve. Prepare a brief for the marketing of the site in line with the criteria set out in this report and initially invite expressions of interest locally in either a full repairing lease or purchase of the site outright. Obtain an independent financial assessment of any expressions of interest received to be funded from the general reserve and to bring a report back to council in March 2026. So can I get a proposer? Andy Jones, a seconder? Anyone seconding it? I'll second it, Fiona. All those in favour? Be... Or... So that's... Oh, that's on a... I have casting vote, right?
Well, you've just voted.
So it's me to make the casting vote? I do, if there's a tie. Pardon?
Yes.
Oh, is it under? Is it four or five?
We have to see, we have to see who's against.
Oh, yeah, is it against? Yeah, sorry. Who's against and who's abstaining? Abstaining? Abstain?
Five abstaining.
Yeah. I just want to reread those bullet points.
Shall we take a minute? Is that... Does everyone want to have a read of it? Lisa, you want to reread?
I definitely want to take a minute.
We'll do it, we'll do the vote again because it's a bit, it's a bit clunky, it's a bit sort of, yeah. But let me just give everyone a minute to read them. Are there any questions about the recommendations?
Can I... I'm minded to agree with Mr Stein's about the non-exclusivity, about giving it six weeks to come up with a business plan, an effective, decent business plan, which we've been asking for since July, if you think you can get it done in that time. I think you need to explain the difficulty we've got with that with regard to the working of the council and an election that's coming up, which makes that difficult. But I think that would be... I think we need to explore both reasons why that should happen.
We've just voted for the exclusivity to be removed. That has gone through.
There should have been an amendment if he wants to vote in any different way.
That has been voted for. This is, most of this is around the delegated authority to Peter and myself and Steve to... Peter in consultation with myself and Steve to close the clubhouse if it is deemed unsafe, is what we're now voting on. Are there any...
That water seems a bit muddy to me because I think terminating the tenancy of the clubhouse based on immediate safety assessments is a separate thing from some of the other things. And obviously, that would be a yes. I don't necessarily think they all go together.
Okay, I get the point. So let's... So let's, but I just want to be clear, we have voted to remove the exclusivity. What we can do is take the ones on here separately that are about the delegated authority of the clubhouse as separate, is that, do I need to propose amendment? Lisa?
Can I ask a question? I can see your hand up.
You need a thing, we have, I just want to.
I may, I may be asking the same question, so.
Looking down the list, oh, sorry. Looking down the list, I can understand the first point which you've carried is to remove the exclusivity. Now, it seems to me that Martin and David from the football club have asked for the, the opportunity to put a business plan forward and to demonstrate in the six week timeframe that progress can be made and trust can be rebuilt and we can make some steps forward. So it would strike, strike me that we break down the list because essentially if you don't carry, if you carry this every point on there, then it doesn't give them the opportunity to do that. If you break it down and say, look, we've got the opportunity to shut the club down if it's not through health and safety grounds, on that. But then as you come down to marketing the site, if you don't carry that element of it, it by default gives the opportunity for the six week period to submit the business plan, which would seem a fair and reasonable step forward.
Can we just take a pause and I just want to consult with Peter just quickly? Can we just? To be clear, that the vote has happened to revoke the exclusivity and was voted on by a majority of councillors and we cannot take that back. What happens next? Can we just sort of go through this? Can we just do the ones that are related to the, specifically related to the safety of the clubhouse as one vote? And then we'll come back and look at some of the others. But we have voted for the, and I just want to be very, very clear on that, that we can't take that back. That has been voted.
Can I, can I ask please? So I am very clear and 100% committed to revoking the exclusivity. I am not wavering on that whatsoever. What I don't understand is that voting yes for these bullet points seems to suggest that there's a revoking of the tenancy at will, which is, but, but this would give anybody the power.
It doesn't because you haven't, you're missing the first line of the recommendation, which is delegate authority to the acting town clerk in consultation with Fiona and Steve too. But that's, it's saying this would be subject to further assessments of the safety and condition of the building and to terminate B H L's tenancy at will on the remaining site when future management arrangements are concerned. But the.
But why do you need my consent? That is, that's, that's a relationship that a landlord and somebody with tenancy at will already has. So is it different? Don't you already have that? Isn't this redundant?
Peter doesn't have it as delegated authority. So Steve, do you want to say something?
Well, I was, I was going to propose, without muddying the waters any further, propose an amendment so that point two just says the delegated authority is granted to acting town clerk in consultation with councillor Fiona Bowers, leader of the council, councillor Steve Tanner, leader of the council assets for further decisions. And leave it at that.
Yeah, what we could do is include the first line to terminate B H L's tenancy of the clubhouse and close the clubhouse if deemed necessary, full stop. And then that's.
Is that this?
It is very important.
Defter to Peter, really.
Well, if, if there's a, if there's a suggested amendment coming forward, and this is the first amendment that we've heard, councillors need to vote on that.
Oh, okay.
Before we, we consider the other recommendations that are before you. So we, we need to vote on whether councillors are in agreement with the amendment that you're proposing. I just need to clarify what that amendment is.
Okay, so after lead councillor for assets, cross out the two and then for all future decisions regarding, yeah, for all.
That's a lot of power.
Okay, for all future decisions regarding Badgers Hill. Yeah, or, yeah.
For all future, that's good, for all future decisions regarding the health.
And then we don't have to come, quit coming back to council meetings. I think that's.
So do you want to propose that?
Yeah, I'm happy to propose it.
Would anyone like to second that?
Can I ask a question as a councillor with, yeah, I, I don't feel comfortable making a decision right now. So I'm asking for further clarification and I don't want to be pushed into making a decision if I'm not clear.
That's fine, but Steve has proposed an amendment and we have to vote on it. There's a process here.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a protocol. So Steve has proposed the amendment and that amendment is that the recommendation is changed to that delegated authority is granted to the acting town clerk in consultation with councillor Fiona Bowers, leader of the council and councillor Steve Tanner, lead councillor for assets, to make further decisions around the site, is that the language?
Further decisions regarding health and safety of the site, that was what I heard.
I think that's fine. I think the, the thing about rescinding the tenancy at will and things like that didn't sit comfortably with me. But regarding health and safety, then yes, I think working in conjunction with the current situation, yes, that's fine.
So Anita, you're seconding it as an amendment?
On that basis, I'll second the amendment.
Who's, who's, all those in favour of the amendment? Okay, and then, yeah, so that is carried with a majority. And then all those in favour of voting for that amended recommendation?
That's majority.
Lisa, abstaining or voting against? Against. Okay, that's the decision made. So I think just to be clear, the decision there was to revoke the decision taken to exclusively enable Badgers Hill to take on a full repairing lease with an option to buy. And that does mean that it will open up, but that does mean that the next steps are open as well. And we will obviously continue to talk to B H L about that. There is no timeframe set on that as well, so, you know, but I think we can have a, but that was the decision that was taken. And then the next one is about giving Peter delegated authority to, and myself for Health and Safety Matters. So that was, yeah, the decisions that were made. Thank you all very much for coming. I think we need to, Lisa, the decisions have been made.
Can I just, I just want to say that I had asked for some clarity before a decision was made. And I didn't feel comfortable making a decision and I didn't get the clarity that I needed before we went into a vote. So I, yeah, I feel uncomfortable with that.
Thank you. So we will, the next council meeting is on the 14th of January at 7pm. So thank you all very much for coming and everyone have a very happy Christmas and New Year. Thank you.